You're ready, Mayor.
Eve Rolland, okay, he is.
Okay.
I will call this special meeting of the Oregon City Commission to order for Sunday, June 7th, 2020, at about 7:02 PM. Call her all, please.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
President.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith.
Here.
Mayor Dan Holliday.
Here. So, before we get started, I have a couple of things I want to say before I read my statement. One, I want to thank the men and women of the Oregon City Police Department. They know what that's for. Today, before the meeting, I had one of our police sergeants administer a breathless alcohol test to me in the presence of Jim Band and the city manager, and I blew a point zero zero. The reason for that is, as some of you know, I've been suffering from some medical issues, and one of those issues recently, in the last couple of months, has come to light where I have some difficulty speaking and enunciating. So, I just wanted to let everybody know that if I slur some words tonight, it's not because I've been drinking, it's because I'm having some medical issues. With that, I will get started. When I was first notified of this meeting tonight, my first reaction was not to come and let the folks say what they wanted. But the more I thought about it, the more I believed that that would be taken as a sign of cowardice. I spent most of the last few days thinking about how we got here, how we got to where we are today, and what I might say to the people of Oregon City. As mayor of Oregon City, I take seriously my obligation to ensure that the rule of law is applied equally to each and every citizen, regardless of color, beliefs, station in life, or where you come from. In George Floyd's case, the law was not applied equally, and that is why we are in this place today. People are angry, they should be, and I'm angry. Let me be clear, what happened to George Floyd was wrong. What those officers did, what those police officers did was wrong. Indeed, they'll get their day in court. As a public servant, I am gratified that the officers who did this will feel the full weight of justice, because George Floyd certainly did not receive it. Indeed, they've already been charged in court and fired from their jobs. We don't do this, nor will we tolerate it in Oregon City. We must bear this in mind as we reflect on the inhumanity done to this man. Peaceful protests and camaraderie honor this man. Mob violence and riots do not honor George Floyd. The equal application of the law honors the man. Three statements that bring us to this place tonight, made on social media over the last few days, are my words and no one else's. The first one, I think, was a post about fireworks on the Fourth of July. The point I made was that for the last two or three months, we've been told by the state government that we had to stay home, close businesses, and could not have community gatherings such as the First City Festival, the Antique Fair, or the Teddy Bear Parade to prevent the spread of the virus. But then the protests started, and all of a sudden, it was okay to gather by the thousands to protest, loot, riot, and vandalize the very businesses that had been forced to close because of the state government orders. There were two separate treatments under the law by those in authority. I didn't agree with it then, and I don't agree with it now. That's playing favorites. That's not how we're supposed to do it in this country. That's putting your thumb on the scales of justice, if you will, and that's wrong. The second was a response to a thread on Nextdoor, a social media site where another person posted the statistics on black Americans being killed by police. I wondered if that, if what that person said was a fact. It was. None of those facts are from some right-wing blog or some unaccredited source, they're from the Washington Post newspaper. I was then called on to account for using the word nitpick, because someone took issue with a statistic that was of small consequence. Nitpick is a word that refers to what moms and dads of every color have had to do to their kids since time immemorial. My mom had to do that for me after playing in the woods with my friends. The last thing I posted was in response to a person saying that I had to recognize my responsibility to support my black Oregon City community members. Well, of course, I do. My response was that I didn't have black, or white, or Asian, or Hispanic, or gay community members. I only had Oregon City community members, and that I do my very best not to see residents in any other way than that, and that's as it should be. Nothing I said or posted was racist, it's not even debatable. But here we are tonight. I commit to treat, I commit to treat each and every one of the citizens of Oregon City with equal respect and equal protection. I would like to play and show you just one sample from the messages I have been getting over the last few days. I've received many calls that have been like this, this is the only person who actually left a message. I have to warn you, the language is graphic, and if you have children watching, I will give you a moment to decide what you want to do. This is, this same person also kindly sent me an email as well. Ms. Rich, you want to post that?
Password. You have two saved voice messages. To listen to your messages, press one. First saved voice message, sent yesterday, Saturday, June 6th, at 6:02 PM, from 5033126028, duration 31 seconds. Hi, Dan, my name is Kathy McFerrin. My phone number is 5033126028. I live in Portland, Oregon, and I just wanted to tell you that we're going to work very hard to get you the fuck out of office, so you can just go fuck yourself, you piece of shit racist cock sucking motherfucker. Hey, call me back, you piece of shit. End of message.
Most of the emails I receive are more polite than that, asking me to make a statement. So here it is. And so here am I. As mayor, this is a commitment I make to you, indeed, the only one I am capable of making. I will treat all Oregon City residents with respect and equality. I always have. This implacable commitment starts in the mayor's office and goes all through our ranks. This has been and will be, will continue to be, my commitment to you. Let me be clear, tearing down buildings and hurting people does not honor George Floyd. Building up our community in goodwill honors George Floyd. Building up community is my commitment to you as mayor, and it honors you. When I placed my right hand on the Bible in taking this oath as your mayor, I promised I would uphold the U.S. Constitution, and I do. I believe in the freedom to peaceably assemble and equal rights under the law as embodied in the First, Fifth, and Fourteenth Amendment of our Constitution. This is what I have vowed to you. This is the oath I took. These first principles are what underpin our civil and ordered society. These principles guide me in how I conduct my personal life and my job as mayor. This is my commitment to you, to do everything to make sure that the citizens of Oregon City have the assurance that I will stand with them and with the rule of law. I will not endorse any unlawful acts done in the name of George Floyd. He deserves better. You deserve better. We, as a community, demand better. I will not ratify riots, I will not bend the law to give a free pass to rioters, and I will not bend a knee in supplication to an enraged mob. I will commit to you that I will treat everyone equally under the law. I will and do endorse peaceful protest. The First Amendment of our Constitution promises a person's God-given right to peaceably assemble. This is what we at the City of Oregon City promise to all of its citizens. That is why, that is what I, as mayor, endorse. Finally, if the good citizens choose to recall me over these words, then I walk out of City Hall for the last time with my head held high, knowing in my heart I tried my best to serve my community in the best way I knew how, and that I support and defend the ideals laid out by our founding fathers in the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States. A woman was walking by Independence Hall and asked Ben Franklin, as he was leaving after the Constitutional Convention, she asked him, "Mr. Franklin, what kind of government have you given us?" His reply was, "A republic, if you can keep it." Equal justice is the best we can do to ensure an ordered and free society. My question today is, can we keep it? May God bless Oregon City, the great state of Oregon, and the United States of America. Thank you. Now, Commissioner President, Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith has a statement, and then we will hear from citizen comment, and with that, we will proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. As commission president, I requested to the mayor earlier today to have an opportunity to speak as second in line and to go before others at this point in time. So, the last two months have certainly been a difficult time to lead a community, from the COVID pandemic to the protests to racial injustice. Over the last few days, I've been listening to our community by reading social media comments and the many emails that were sent to us. I would like to address a few of the emails that I and other commissioners have reviewed and received since the mayor posted his comments on the Nextdoor Neighborhood app. The death of George Floyd was a tragic event. It has sparked a reaction by many people in the United States to step out and protest racist actions against the black community. Systemic racism is not measured by a single data point or a statistic like the number of blacks shot by police. It exists in many areas of our lives. America has come a long way in the fight against racism, but it still exists across the nation. I do not condone racism toward any individual, nor do I condone discrimination toward others based on race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, ethnicity, or age. This moral value applies for me personally, to the people that I work with in my day job, to my neighbors, our community, and the city government in which I oversee. I hope that this commission will come together tonight in solidarity against racism and discrimination in Oregon City. I also would like to see the city's executive team to consider ways in which diversity, equity, and inclusion can be improved within city operations. We all have a part to play in improving the world that we live in. I have been asked about our police department and its use of force. I met with Chief Band on Friday afternoon to discuss the police department policies. I have a very high level of respect for Chief Band and the department that he leads. He requires accountability of all of his officers and at every level in the organization. I believe our police department does a good job, and that they too are dealing with the George Floyd incident and how it degrades the trust and respect of the badge that they wear. I believe that our community loves our police department, I see it all the time in comments on Facebook and when we're at community events. But we work hard to hold our officers accountable, and I assure you that I and Chief Band are in agreement and willing to act very swiftly if any racial or discriminatory actions arise within the police department. I was assured of this in my conversation with the chief on Friday. I also believe that we should continually review our policies and actions to ensure that we are operating in a respectful manner toward all people in our community. I believe that we are created equal. As humans, we all fall short and have to work every day to be the best that we can be, all of us. We fail because we are human, but we can continue to change our behaviors to end racist actions toward people of color. Our freedom of speech allows me, the mayor, our community members, to say whatever we would like to say. It allows us to protest things that we don't like in our society. It's one of the foundational pillars of America and one that makes America the greatest country to live in. I appreciate the passion of our community and the many emails that have been sent to the city commission. I'm hopeful that we can use this meeting tonight to come together as a community, as a city government, and as a city commission, to acknowledge the racism that still occurs in our city and nation, to acknowledge the hurt that racist and discriminatory actions and words can cause, and continually strive to create an equitable and just community.
Thank you, Commissioner. So with that, we're going to start with our public comment, and I'm just going to take it in the list that you've presented to me, Katie, is that... So, first up, we have Victoria Taft.
I would just like to say that the mayor has done a fine job of reading Oregon City.
Excuse me, excuse me, can you give your name and city of residence for the record, please?
I am currently, I am currently in the state of California, born and raised in Oregon.
Thank you.
Ties to Portland, Oregon, and I would just simply like to say that it is not fair to put someone out of a job, or even, even think about it, for whatever it is that the mayor supposedly did wrong by not kneeling to the mob. Shame on you for even thinking about it. It is time to heal, it is not time to divide. You should furthermore continue on with whatever it is that you need to be doing for Oregon City, which is to bring people together to make sure that something like what happened to George Floyd does not happen in Oregon City. And do not kneel to a mob that would have you do something hastily that you have not given any consideration to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Rhonda Walsh.
Oh, Roland, I am so sorry. My name is Roland Walsh, I live in Oregon City. I'm a citizen and business owner here, and I am embarrassed by you, Mayor. I see over here we have our city commission goals, and it says, "The vision is to embrace and advance Oregon City's historic role as a regional leader." Earlier this week, you implied the issue of racism does not directly apply to this commission. You said, quote, "I don't believe what we do here has any impact on state or national issues." This is not leadership. This is complicity in a system that directly benefits you as a white man. This is cowardice, not leadership. We, as citizens, deserve brave leaders who speak up for justice and ask, "How can we improve? How can we do better?" Furthermore, I was made aware of the comments you made on social media, and you were comfortable making the claims diminishing the issue of continued police violence against black people, saying this is hardly an epidemic. I am embarrassed today to operate a business here and live here. This inflammatory language is unacceptable. And I would like to know if this is willful ignorance of the racism in this country, this state, and this city, or if this is purposeful gaslighting to maintain white privilege. And I'll end by asking, how can I have faith in this city's ability to work towards equity and justice with such a mayor?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Shanda, or Shanda Hall. Thank you.
Thanks, my name is Shanda Hall, I live in the McLaughlin neighborhood in Oregon City, and I do appreciate you being here, Mr. Mayor. I want to start by reading the list of cities from the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium whose mayor signed the letter condemning the murder of George Floyd. Gladstone, Beaverton, Canby, Cornelius, Durham, Fairview, Forest Grove, Gresham, Happy Valley, Hillsborough, King City, Lake Oswego, Maywood Park, Milwaukee, North Plains, Portland, River Grove, Sherwood, Tigard, Twallington, Vancouver, Westland, Wilsonville, Wood Village. The only city missing from that list is ours. Our mayor's silence speaks volumes. And let's pretend that this was a morally neutral stance to take, it's not, but let's pretend it is, I want to talk about optics. The number one goal of this commission was to cultivate an environment for successful economic development. New businesses choosing where to put down roots, consumers choosing where to spend their dollars, families moving to the area and the metro area wanting to buy a home, these are all hugely impactful things people look at today. There is a concerted effort underway right now statewide to stop doing business in Oregon City. In the McLaughlin neighborhood, I can easily drive across the bridge to Westland, and I'm just one family. It is not a good look to be so out of step, not just with every other mayor in our area, but with our own citizens. This is so out of step as to be an embarrassment with real economic consequences, which affects my family and my neighborhood, and affects the realtor market in this, in this city. It is hard, I want to talk about equity and inclusion. It's hard, it's annoying, it's uncomfortable, and I don't want to talk about it, but I sound like my middle schooler, and I don't accept that from her, and I won't accept that from any governing body, and not our mayor. So here we are, and here we all will be at every city council meeting, any commissioner meeting from here on out, because when we know better, we do better, and we know now to show up and pay more attention to local events. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Reverend John Witham.
Masks and glasses do not cooperate often.
Don't I know it.
My name is Reverend John Witham, I am a citizen of Oregon City, Oregon. Mr. Mayor, you spoke earlier of placing your hand on a Bible, and if you turn past the first few pages of that Bible where you write your name and who gave it to you, you'll find Genesis, Chapter 1. Genesis, Chapter 1 declares that humanity is blessed by God, and that the diversity of humanity is created and blessed by God. You seem to have a lot to say about riots and rioters, and a lot of interest in the economic impact of our current national moment, but what you don't seem to have a lot to say about is the value of humanity, the value and blessing of human lives, the very lives that you represent. Across the country, black Americans are making it clear that there are two different Americas. There's the one that they inhabit that is plagued by systemic racism. There's the one that they inhabit where it's acceptable for a police officer to kneel on the neck of a human being for nine minutes until the breath of life is choked out of him. And that systemic racism is not limited to one locale. This is the systemic racism that 400 years of subjugation by African American, of African Americans has brought us to. Mr. Mayor, the question I have for you this evening, what Oregon City are we building? Are we building an Oregon City where all of humanity, all of the humanity that is blessed by God and precious, has an opportunity to thrive? One where the systemic racism is dealt with in a way that sets an example for the entire nation? Or are we going to cower behind the status quo and the fear of possible economic consequences? I pray for you, I pray for you every day, and I pray that you would learn to value human life in the way that that precious Bible that you've laid your hand on values it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Strobeck.
My name's Steve Strobeck, I live in Westland, I've got family that live over here, my daughter lives here. It's been an emotional couple of months, I've been actually considering moving over here. Part of the actions of the council, for me, will determine whether or not I even do. Talk of defunding police, finger pointing, people talking about systemic, they keep using this word systemic. Systemic is like an epidemic. You know, I defend the mayor, I defend his comment. I did some math of my own, there's nearly a million police officers. They arrest 10 million a year. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I think I'm close. People killed by police that were unarmed, I think the number for between black and white total was about 30 out of 10 million arrests. Unarmed, 30. Those or so, I think, were, you know, there were some racial breakdowns from there, but it's around 10 in the black community, to 20 white community, shot dead unarmed, killed unarmed, like George Floyd. I don't think there's a single person in this room, or listening, or wherever you are, that doesn't agree that George Floyd was murdered by a bad guy, and he's caught, he's on video, he's going to get what he deserves, and that's what justice is. But systemic is a word that, you know, is just not true. I mean, we're talking about, of all of those arrests, and these all in unarmed killings, it's point, no, it's 0.00029% of 10 million arrests. How the hell that's systemic, I don't know, but that doesn't sound systemic. That number was 5%, 10%, 1%, half a percent, that would be systemic. But these numbers don't support it, we've got everybody outraged, we're threatening police, the rhetoric, I'm sick of it, I'm tired of it, I don't want to hear it anymore. 99.59% of the police department, people are good and deal with a lot of jackasses day in and day out. And, you know, did anybody in this room, or did anybody on the council condemn the rioting in Portland by groups like Antifa?
Mr. Strobeck, you're out of time. Okay. Thank you. I'll leave you with that question. Molly Robinson, Robison.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Molly Robinson, I'm a resident of Oregon City. I grew up here, I work here now. I'm a bartender in Oregon City, and as a bartender, I unfortunately get to hear a lot of racism for some reason. There's a lot of things that people are comfortable saying around bartenders that they're not necessarily comfortable saying around other folks. So, I personally have a very good understanding of exactly how much racism is present in Oregon City, I hear it all the time. And I, I had a black man come into my bar about a year ago, he had just gotten a new job at a big tech company in Portland, he was moving up from the Bay Area, and he was trying to scope out a place to live, and he was going around to different communities, going to restaurants, bars, asking people questions about what it's like, because he has two black children who he wants to grow up in a safe place. And he really wanted to know the reality of Oregon City, because it was a place he was considering, because we have great schools here. And I had to tell him, yes, this is a racist town, we have a lot of problems here, we have a lot more to address, I can't tell you that this is the best place for your black children to grow up. As a bartender, I also am put in the situation of having to make judgment calls about when to call the police to assist me with things, a lot more than your average person, when an unruly drunk person wanders in off the street, when fights break out. And that's always a really scary situation to be put in, because as much as I want assistance in situations like that, I also don't want to escalate the situation. And a lot of the conversations that people are having nationwide about defunding police departments, it's not... departments, it's not about saying, we don't want protection, we don't want there to be any police. It's saying, in these situations, like when I have to call someone because there's a fight, someone maybe is having a mental health crisis, I don't want an armed, uniformed officer to show up. Defunding police departments means gradually allocating, reallocating some of the resources to other community resources that can better help in those situations. And I think it's really important that people understand that. It's so that when we have these situations where someone who's better equipped to deal with a mental health crisis can come help me instead of an officer, that's important. I do not doubt the integrity of the police officers that serve in Oregon City. I know some of them personally. I have family who are police officers. I think that they do a good job. They do what they can in most situations. But just because I understand that does not mean I don't think that we shouldn't be having this conversation here in Oregon City as well as everywhere around the country. There are things we need to deal with and talk about.
Man, you're out of time.
Thank you.
Judy Schaefer.
Good evening, and thank you for having this meeting tonight. And Mayor, thank you for being here and everyone that's able to be here in this meeting. My name is Judy Schaefer, and I'm a resident of Oregon City. I've lived here for approximately 40 years. I want to talk tonight about what I want from leadership in my city and my local government. I want leadership to be respectful in politic and the things that they say and do. In simple terms, I want them to be thoughtful. I want leadership to be truthful. I want leadership to do the research and share their research. I want leadership to engage in dialogue that involves sharing and listening attentively. I expect leadership to exhibit and model moral behavior in leadership. What does moral mean to me in this context? It means upholding our laws, not discounting or negating other people's experiences. I want leadership to admit that they don't know or they don't understand something and be willing to listen and learn. I want leadership to value me as much as they want me to value them. I want my leaders to take the lead in acknowledging community-wide issues, events, and concerns. Most recently, COVID-19 and the death of George Floyd. I want city leadership to review how our city government was protecting our citizens and updating that information regularly. I wanted leadership to acknowledge racial inequities and tensions and address our city's history around this issue and the changes that have occurred and what the future our leaders see for all of us. Since we are the historical beginning of the United States presence in this land, I want Oregon City to be a leader in being honest about all of that history and start the dialogue of reconciliation and future vision that is inclusive, truthful, and vibrant. Thank you. Thank you for listening to me.
So in the interest of full disclosure, the next speaker is my brother. We have not been close. He spent the last more than two decades overseas as a minister. So I have no idea what he's going to say, but Mr. Holiday, you're on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, just to review very quickly. Recently, my wife and I moved back after living for 25 years. 10 years in the former Soviet country of Lithuania, and then 16 years in Germany. We now reside on the peninsula in Washington State. My interest to be here tonight, as having grown up in Oregon City, having graduated from Oregon City High School, is, I guess I would speak in support of the mayor in that I believe he's, as an individual, trying to lead and provide an environment for many other individuals, use the best of his ability to think, reason, feel, emote, to bring the community together. There is a lot of difference of opinion on many things here. There's many phrases that get used without any general definition, but there's an assumption that everybody knows what it means, and I'm not so sure that's always the case. I've yet to hear a succinct, clear definition of what we're talking about when we talk about systemic racism. I've lived on a couple of different continents and several different countries, and all of them have, at points, evidence of racism. I don't know that any of them had systemic racism. So I would just say, I'm very much in a learning curve myself, having only lived in the United States again for the last two years, and I'm trying to play catch-up with what's going on. And I guess I would say that I would agree with everyone that said, let's try to listen to one another, let's try to speak with definition, let's try to be thoughtful, let's try to keep the heat down, and realize that at some point in time, we all do have to live together and share the same space. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Matt Brady. Matt on the phone?
I am Matt Brady. I'm a resident of Oregon City. The comments made by Mayor Dan Holiday recently dismissing systemic police brutality in America and trivializing the pain felt by many people of color are beneath his office and an embarrassment to the people of Oregon City. In addition, at the last commission meeting, the mayor, a white man, aggressively refused to allow any commentary on events gripping our country right now, events related to systemic oppression of people of color. We white people are conditioned from birth to believe that there will never be any consequences to behaving like this, that we can bulldoze over the concerns, painful realities, and life experiences of people of color. Thankfully, that impunity is coming to an end. I look forward to coming together as a community to work to recognize and dismantle systemic whites supremacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Okay. So I have spent the last day and a half without a whole lot of sleep, and it has aggravated my medical condition, so I am going to turn the rest of this meeting over to Commissioner Lyle Smith, our commission president. I do want to say one thing on item 3B. I have canceled any effort to, I had raised quite a bit of money and had set up with the fireworks company to start the process of making it happen. I have since canceled that. So if you guys want to discuss fireworks, I suppose you can, but that's a moot point at this point. I hope that I can put together something for next year if I'm still the mayor. With that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Lyle Smith. Thank you very much.
Are you leaving?
I am.
So you're not interested in what the rest of us have to say?
I'll hear what the rest of you have to say on the recording.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Katie, do you want me to move or stay here?
That's up to you.
I just mean for the camera or anything.
You'll be good there.
Okay. All right, so that's the end of public comment, and I think it's time for city commission discussion. I don't see anybody raising their hands, so just.
Yes, I would like.
Commission McGriff.
Yes, unless Commissioner O'Donnell would like to go ahead of me?
I'd be pleased to follow you. I've got quite a bit to say, but I'd like to recognize you first.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Like all of you, I have read all the emails that have come into our boxes for the last few days. I have talked to many, many citizens in Oregon City. I've had people from all over the region that I know and some I don't know reach out to me to ask me about what is going on here. First of all, let me state the obvious in response to several of the speakers. I live in my skin every day. And unless you are a person of color, you have no idea about what I go through on a daily basis, a yearly basis, for my entire life. And I have actually lived a rather privileged life for most people of color, because my father was in the military, I was raised in a multicultural environment, and I was raised to believe that there is no difference in people. Well, let me tell you, when we left the military, you found out real quick about how that was not really the truth outside the confines of a military base. So I want you to know that when people speak about privilege, they speak about, they don't have any idea about what's going on. You don't. You really, really don't. I feel privileged to be sitting here representing the people of this community, a community that I have spent 30 years in, more than I spent with my father in the military. I love this community. I work for this community. I care about this community. We are a city of firsts on many levels, nationally, statewide, and locally. Our citizens have told me that they have a high expectation of our local government. However, over the last few weeks, those expectations have not been met and have been sorely lacking. We need to listen to our community, and we need to make sure that we are living up to their expectation of our leadership. Let us be the first commission in this city to approve a resolution of support for all the things that have been going on over the last few days. We cannot ignore the pain, the anguish, and trauma experienced by people of color over the decades. We cannot ignore that pain, anguish, and trauma, no matter the denial by many people, by some people, by anyone. The only victims to this tragedy are those who have lost their lives over the decades because of the color of their skin. Our citizens have asked us to act. We need to acknowledge them. We need to listen to them, and we need to hear, and we need to act. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McGriff. Very well said. I don't see a hand raised, Commissioner O'Donnell. Go ahead.
Well, first, I want to thank this entire community, including the 26 emails that Katie forwarded us, the recorder forwarded us immediately before the meeting, the many emails that came to me, almost 1,000 people who made the Oregon City Good Chat, voiced their opinion. I'm the oldest person on this commission, and I go back, I was 18 in 68, and Martin Luther King got assassinated. And I remember that, and I remember him, and I remember what it did to our communities. I'm going to give you a little background about me, because I want you to know from where I speak. So I grew up in a city like Oregon City, 43 miles from Philadelphia. And that city had a population that was probably 20% Black and 20% Latino, Puerto Rican. And I lived in an area of town that was probably, you know, less desirable, at least viewed as less desirable, and that's where those populations resided. And my neighbors and friends were Black and Puerto Rican and Hispanic. And they were our friends, and they were good people, people who had hopes and dreams like everybody else. And I find it amazing sometimes that I'm talking about this 52 years later. And racism does exist. It may not be as blatant, but it exists. And I was fortunate in my lifetime to serve with minority officers. I know that I've seen them save the lives of white officers. I saw a Black man save the life of a white officer from another Black man. So I am thankful for that life's experience and perspective it gives me. And I join with everybody, and I am heart sick. So I looked at all the comments made on the internet and the letters sent, and they ranged from disappointment to calling for resignation and recall. Some of them even offered to try to educate our mayor. And, you know, Black lives do matter, but all lives matter. And I see this country in disarray and violence, and I'll tell you what, blue lives matter too, the guys wearing those uniforms, because we're seeing police officers essentially get assassinated. So in the end, all lives matter, but this undercurrent, racism isn't as visible as it was in 1968, but it still exists, and nobody, don't kid yourself, it does. But there are dangers in labels and perception that a Black man is a child of a lesser god, or all cops are bad. I've talked with Chief Jim Band, a man I admire, and he has said many times how he's counseled his officers that the actions of one reflect on all, and it's too easy to group people into groups. But tonight, our task is, besides acknowledging what needs to be acknowledged in what I've just said, and I join with Commissioner McGriff, and let's make a statement. And I'm all in favor of that, because it can't be said too often. But for the second time in as many months, this commission finds itself coming to a special session to counteract the actions of the mayor. The first time was with the COVID-19, and we are going to discuss the fireworks issue. And we are going to discuss all the others, another action where the mayor took action to silence the voices of his fellow commissioners. Excuse me if I bounce back and forth, because I don't have a lot of prepared remarks, but I want to say to everybody, I do have the confidence of the police department, have confidence in them, and I think this talk of disbanding police departments is nonsense. Who do you call at that moment when you need more help than ever? And what do you expect of these brave men and women? So one thing I have to answer is, many of the letters I received asking this commission to remove the mayor, please understand, we do not have that power. This is a government of five commissioners or a majority of commissioners present. We do not have the power to impeach like the federal government or to remove, as you could potentially remove. We do not have that power. Only you have that power. And if you choose to exercise it, that is absolutely your right as citizens. So I don't think this is, some of the messages put out, this is not a time for statistics. There are no acceptable losses, not one. And I guess until we start, how are we going to solve this? You're going to solve it from the top down? Yeah, but we're going to solve it from the bottom up, from our everyday interaction, when we view our fellow human beings, regardless of whatever, their color, their creed, their sexuality, when we view them as people with their own hopes and dreams, trying to live their own life and have loves of their own. So if like me, you're heart sick, join me in working together to make this a better community and recognize humanity and the dreams that each of us share. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
I'm heart sick too. And I'm going to kind of talk a little bit tonight. I have not prepared any comments. I spent a day with the students of Oregon City High School that graduated today. It was a big day in Oregon City for those students. And as a teacher, those students look up to us as leaders in this community, as teachers. They look up to the adults in this world and in this city. And being a student, a past student, a former student of Oregon City High School, I know the problems that this community has had in the past, and I know the problems that this community has currently in regards this community has currently in regards to equality and racism and being inclusive. And I'm seeing this city change. And I'm seeing this, I'm seeing it change, but there's still a lot of work to be done. There are still issues in this city. And I want to make some comments about some of the statements that have been said tonight. I've been on this commission for two terms in the past, for eight years, and now I'm on my third term. This is, this is one of the hardest meetings I've ever had to be a part of. And the only other meeting that I can think of that even comes near as hard as this meeting is the meeting following the shooting as Officer Libke passing away. I come from a police family, and I know we have a good police department. And I'm devastated by the things that I'm seeing in the world today. And I know we do a good job in Oregon City, but we can do better. I am so honored to be a part of this commission. And to just show you an example of how far this city has come, we have two women on the city commission. We have the first person of color on the Oregon City Commission in its history. We have the first openly gay city commissioner on this commission in the city's history. This is the most diverse city commission this city has ever seen. But we can still do better, and we know that. And I have to say, I grew up with the mayor being a friend of our family. I grew up with the mayor being a friend of my dad's side of the family. And interestingly enough, I grew up with my mom's side of the family, good friends with Rob Holliday. And for years, I didn't know the two are related, and I appreciate the mayor's brother coming to speak tonight, and I appreciate the mayor speaking tonight, and I appreciate the mayor being here tonight. He should not have left. I appreciate his comments, but there are a lot of other issues that we're going to discuss tonight. As angry as some of the citizens are in this city about the mayor's comments, and we can debate whether it's about statistics or about terminology or vocabulary, but there is more concerns that I have about the mayor than just what the citizens of this city know in the post that the mayor has made. And I think we will talk about those this evening. I'm also sad that the mayor left this evening because I believe it was Chandra, or Shandra, I'm sorry, I can't remember for sure, one of the citizens that made a comment at the beginning of the meeting was actually a comment referring to the letter from the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, which actually is a letter that I stumbled upon today. It was dated June 4th. The Mayor's Consortium letter was dated June 4th. It was signed by every single mayor in the metro area except for our mayor on the same day that he posted the statistic that the citizens of this city are so concerned about. Now, I have to acknowledge that the mayor made some statements in the beginning of the meeting as far as racism and as far as his support towards peaceful protests. Then my question for the mayor is, why didn't you sign this letter? I'm going to read the letter. I'm going to read the letter because it was signed by every single mayor in the Portland metro area except for our mayor. And if the mayor is true in what he said at the beginning of the meeting, then why didn't he sign this letter? The Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium is comprised of the Portland Metropolitan Region's 26 mayors, stands in solidarity with our residents as we mourn the murder of George Floyd at the hands of those entrusted to protect him. We also recognize that Mr. Floyd's tragic death is not isolated and that no community is immune to systemic and historic patterns of racial injustice. As mayors, we are uniquely positioned to convene our communities, particularly black people in our communities, to listen and examine our processes and policies with full transparency and advance meaningful reforms. We are committed to taking these actions. We also stand united in our support of peaceful protests, which testify to the systemic and institutional racial violence that plagues our nation. We recognize the responsibility to heed this collective expression of grief and justice with humility, and we accept our obligation to be agents of this institutional change. There is a long road ahead, but we must, but the work must be engaged, must be engaged I'm reading small text, I apologize. And it starts at the local level. As mayors, we must initiate the work with empathy, open minds, and love. Why didn't our mayor sign that? And I hope that we come to some sort of a statement tonight, and we can ask the mayor to sign that one. But I think that, in addition to the mayor's comments, is concerning because it kind of makes it appear that the comments is, you know, basically, this letter didn't say much different than what the mayor said tonight. So I think I'll leave it at that for the moment on this topic, but I want the citizens to know that it is not a coincidence that there's three agenda items on this meeting. And even if you read the staff reports for the meeting and each agenda item tonight, you might not understand that all three of these items are connected, and all three of these items pertain to actions taken by the mayor in the past week and a half, some of which are publicly known and some of which are not.
Okay. So I think we've heard from all of the commissioners. We've talked about a couple of items. I know I spoke earlier in the evening, and I do want to say I really appreciate all the folks that are taking the time to come in and to be on the phone and participate in this meeting tonight. I think it's really valuable for us to hear from the community. And for everybody else that's watching on television, our community needs to hear that there's others in the community who are coming up and saying something and saying how much they want reform in our community. I definitely think you have commissioners here who are listening and want to take action. We want to work with the police department. We want to work with our city staff. There's, like I said earlier, there's work for all of us to do. And I agree with Commissioner Smith. I do think you've been here, you've served multiple terms, and I've only been here a year and a half, and I will agree, this has definitely been the hardest meeting probably to sit through and to, you know, figure out what to say. So we've talked about a resolution. Last time we met in emergency session, we talked about having a press release, I believe was one thing that we did. We also did a resolution. I mentioned in my earlier comments that I would like to, I'm proposing, I'm looking to support from our, from the other commissioners about asking our city's executive teams, this is all of our managers, these are the folks that our city manager meets with, and I want to make sure that this conversation is happening in the city. I'm happy to give city manager Conkle, if you want to take a moment to say a few words or if you just want to continue with us talking, but.
Oh, it is. It is happening. I've been meeting with the personnel director, and Patrick had been on the job maybe two months, and I came in to meet with him, and I said, you and I are going to work together on a DEI policy. I think that I had already told the city manager Conkle that I was going to be meeting and got his permission to meet with Patrick to talk about this topic. It's something that he and I have talked about over the years that we have known each other, and I feel very confident that the city is moving in that direction. I have no doubt in my mind that the staff is very keenly aware that we're probably needing to step it up a little bit, but I am confident that we are going to get there, and I have every confidence in the city manager making that happen.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm not sure that that's been daylighted.
No, it hasn't been.
It probably hasn't been, which is totally fine, but.
And I'm only saying it now because, as you know, I like to work behind the scenes. So I've been working behind the scenes with staff on this particular item because not only is it important to me, but it is important to our community to make sure that we can, as much as we possibly can, reflect the residents of our community and our staff. And again, as I want to say again publicly, that I have every confidence in the city manager's ability to move that item forward.
Want to make a comment on where that's at or an update? Anything more?
Yes. So I appreciate Commissioner McGriff, she's had conversations with Mr. Foils. It is, it will be the priority to move that forward and have that policy updated, created from what we currently have. I appreciate the opportunity to go back to my team and have these conversations. One of the letters exhibits that you received tonight was from some of the folks in the Community Development Department who are taking on the comprehensive plan update, and I applaud them for the letter that they wrote. I thought it was thoughtful, and I thought it was timely and completely appropriate for what we should be thinking about when we think about the community that we want to strive for. I think that, I appreciate all of the comments tonight from the commissioners, from the citizens, from everyone who's participated, from the emails that we've received. You know, as local government, we have the opportunity, we have the responsibility to respond to our citizens, and we have the responsibility to listen thoughtfully to what we are hearing. Nobody in this room is perfect. I certainly am not. I learn something new every day, and that is so much of what we need to focus on, is thoughtfully hearing. Everyone brings unique life experiences that have impacted them in positive and negative ways that each of us need to hear and learn from and acknowledge, and I look forward to doing that.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any direction for Mr. Conkle on next steps?
I, yes, I would like to recommend to my fellow commissioners that I had received a few days before getting it from the city manager, the resolution that was passed by the school district. One of the school board members sent that to me earlier in the week, and I read it, but it's not quite appropriate for us. However, I was delighted to receive, as we all did, the email from Paul Espy. And I really felt that that, his suggestion for a resolution that we adopt really kind of covers everything that I felt needed to be said and needed to be covered in terms of our commitment to not only celebrating the diversity of our staff, but all members of our community. And if, I think that if we are, we find that acceptable, I would like to recommend that we adopt that.
So have all of the commissioners had a chance to read that resolution or?
Suggestion.
The suggestion that was proposed to us in public comment? Do we, have you had a chance to read it, or do we want to take a moment? We could provide comments back to Mr. Conkle. Commissioner O'Donnell?
It's very lengthy, what was submitted by Mr. Espy. I think what I would like to do is take the best of all worlds and craft it into a single document, and I would task Mr. Conkle with doing that. Take the best of all worlds. There's multiple submittals by different people and by corporations, and let's take the one that best fits us and addresses our situation most properly.
Commissioner Smith?
I would agree with that. I read the email from Paul Espy, but I think there's points in that, there's definitely, the letter that I read tonight from the Mayor's Consortium definitely is an important piece too to look at. And I, being so busy the last couple of days, I have not read the school district's statement, but I would read that as well, and if we can try to put something together that comes from the city that summarizes that.
Would it please the pleasure, please the commission? You know, I think that we would, I am confident that we can take the, what we've heard here tonight, put something in a resolution format, and if it works for you, we will amend the commission work session on Tuesday to allow for a meeting to review that, what we put, what we were able to put together, and we can get that out, and the commission can consider it, make any edits that they need, and then move forward if that works for the commission.
Yes, I'd like it as soon as we possibly can.
Sounds good. I see a head nod from Commissioner Smith. Commissioner O'Donnell, a head nod, yes?
I agree.
Yeah.
All right, that sounds good.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Are we ready to move on to the next item on the agenda? I think we are.
This is the commission president.
All right. So we're on item 3B, Fourth of July fireworks show in Oregon City, an existing executive order limiting large gatherings. Mr. Conkle?
Thank you. So as the commission is greatly aware, we've been dealing with the COVID-19 response. The city commission itself has declared an emergency in response to this pandemic that we're facing. On March 23rd, the governor ordered Oregonians to stay home, save lives, directing individuals to stay home to the greatest extent possible, ordering the closure of specific retail businesses, require physical distancing measures for other public and private facilities, and imposing requirements for outdoor areas and licensed childcare. Clackamas County is currently in phase one of the reopening Oregon plan, which allows for an increase in businesses and activities that may reopen. Per Executive Order 20-27 from the state, from the governor, individuals may gather locally outside for any purpose in groups of up to 25, including those social and recreational gatherings previously limited to 10 or fewer people, as long as the distance of at least six feet can be maintained between individuals from different households. When Clackamas County enters phase two of the reopening Oregon plan, the number of individuals allowed to gather locally outside will increase from 25 to 100 with the same physical distancing requirements outlined in phase one, which we're currently in. The reopening Oregon plan has canceled all large events such as concerts, conventions, festivals, and live audience sporting events until September at the earliest. The city of Oregon City has canceled all large summer events in response to the COVID pandemic, such as movies and concerts in the park. The commission has requested this special meeting to discuss and clarify the applicability of the governor's executive orders related to allowing or supporting a Fourth of July fireworks event in Oregon City. This came about, there was some discussion, as the mayor indicated earlier, of trying to put together a Fourth of July event. And it would be, as the administrator of the city, extremely difficult to understand how that would comply with the existing executive orders if that were to take place in Oregon City. And so there, I appreciate any discussion or questions that the commission may have as it relates to this topic.
Well, thank you. Where do we start?
I see two folks raised their hands.
Yeah, I don't have my hand raised.
And Commissioner O'Donnell, I think, was muted or I didn't hear him, so how about you go, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yeah, he's still muted.
Oh, now he's muted.
Hold on. Hold on.
We can't hear you.
How about now?
Now.
There you go.
So there's two questions here. One is very simple. I mean, shall we have a fireworks display? And the answer is simply no. The other is more complex, and it involves, once again, and I'm sorry to say this, our mayor going out on his own without the previous engagement of the commission, with no discussion, knowing that the state is in closed down mode until July 5th, knowing that we have canceled every event, concerts in the park, movies in the park, knowing that getting a permit would probably be denied, to go out and engage businesses in the community seeking contributions without the forethought of the implications of what is going on, essentially flying in the face of the state regulations and potentially endangering citizens, that's the issue that's under discussion tonight. The fireworks is, I'm pretty confident my fellow commissioners are not going to say fireworks are out. I'm sorry, but they're out. Conduct is the question tonight, and that all, I'll stop for that.
Commissioner Smith?
All right. So Commissioner O'Donnell raised that point. Just for the community to understand, the fireworks issue came because of a post made by the mayor comparing fireworks shows to protests and wondering why we can't have fireworks if we were, you know, why we couldn't have fireworks in, if, since protests were being allowed. There's, first of all, a distinct difference. One is city-sponsored, and that's the difference. And one is a city-sponsored event in a climate of a pandemic. But even to put a point on that even further, the mayor did not ever come to the city commission to bring up the issue of a fireworks show, just the same as he did not bring up the stay-at-home order that he posted about that put us in the situation of having the first emergency meeting to deal with the mayor. So the first emergency meeting that we dealt with the mayor's posting without representing the commission, we basically talked at that meeting about how the mayor does not represent us as a commission. And in the end, that meeting, we voted to uphold the governor's stay-at-home order, which, by the way, the mayor voted to support. So not only did the mayor not listen to us as a commission when we told him to, you know, kind of tone down his posts that kind of affect the city, but he also went behind our backs essentially, without bringing the fireworks issue up, and started actually going to businesses and getting contributions for an event that could not happen in the city legally, and for an event that violates what he voted for in the past emergency meeting that we had. And to add to it, he had our economic development director attend that meeting, which is including a staff member in a meeting with a business to promote, or to kind of plan an event that could never have happened, and without the knowledge of the city, without the knowledge of the city commission. And I think that that is a real concern. I guess what I'm worried about tonight, separate from the first topic on the agenda, is basically everything that we talked about at our first emergency meeting has been replicated again. And tonight, going away from this meeting, it's not enough to just tell the mayor, you don't represent us. It's to a bigger point, where I'm, you know, really questioning the capability of our mayor in leading this city, and that really worries me. We are very limited as a city in the commission as to what we can do. And I think I'm at a loss tonight because what we have done so far is about as much as we as a commission can do. We could probably go a little deeper in that conversation tonight, because remember, we still have one more topic to talk about. So at the end of this meeting, I'm just worried that if we just say what we said at the last meeting, that we're just going to get more of the same. And I'm worried at the, I'm worried about the position that our mayor has put our staff in, in at least multiple occasions in the past couple of months, and, and actually the position has put the entire city in.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I would have to agree, and I concur with all the comments I've heard. It is very concerning, and it's also challenging to feel like we have no levers to pull. And, you know, as, as a new person on the committee, I'm looking at our attorney, you know, I think it would be good to hear, and for the community to hear, if there are any options, what our charter says, could you, could you walk through that maybe in a brief fashion, just so that we're not missing anything?
Would it be okay if I spoke before she gets to that? Would you mind?
Sure. That will give her a second, too.
Yes, thank you. I was going to say, maybe I can give you some time to look something up.
Yes.
So I want to concur with my, all three of you. I feel very strongly that no elected official of this city should have any business soliciting any company, person in our community, outside of this community, for any money. If there has been money collected, as it's been stated, that money needs to be returned, and a letter of apology sent, because this puts us in a very precarious position. And we've all heard recently on the news about quid pro quo. I feel that that is something that has already happened, and I have, I am very concerned, and I think it borders on a little bit of, not a little bit, it's misconduct. And I think that there is, it's unethical. It just should not be happening. We know that one of the companies that's, that was asked, is a company that may be asking it, is, has been asking us for help. How does that look? It does not look professional, appropriate, or ethical at all. So we need to make very sure that this doesn't happen. Again, I thought it was understood. We don't do that. We should not do that. It's not our, our responsibility, nor is it our task.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell, you raised your hand.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm going to join with Commissioner McGriff. You know, we get these emails, and it says, commissioners, do your job, you know, get to do something about this mayor. And once again, I think it's important to realize, we do not have any power to control any one of our members. We cannot remove them. We cannot impeach them. And I don't know if, you know, like, police forces have something called Cub Code, conduct on becoming an officer. Is there, is there a conduct on becoming an official? And how, do we have any official misconduct? Do we have ethics violations? And those are not questions to be answered by me, but by our, our attorney and staff. So I'll join, you know, I don't, I felt there was a, had the potential to be viewed as a quid pro quo also, and I'll just name Commissioner McGriff in her statement. Thank you.
I do want to say that within Roberts Rules of Order, there is a procedure where a motion could be made regarding conduct. Is that enough time, Ms. Richter?
A question for my fellow, a question for my fellow commander. What would the, what would the infraction be, and any penalty associated with it? Is it a censure?
I don't think we could. I don't, I don't think it would be a censure.
No, it probably would not be. Roberts Rules of Order does have, so by the way, for the record, I have a certificate in parliamentary procedure, so I was looking all this up in my paperwork. Basically, there can be a motion of some sort made with regard to presiding officers, or any officer, unelected officer, with regard to whether it's neglective duty, disorderly conduct, misconduct in office, persistent violation of rules. There, there are many things in Roberts Rules of Order that talk about this particular item. It depends, I mean, it even goes as far as bribery and larceny and all of that. We're not talking on that level, but there's a broad range within Roberts Rules of Order that talk about this. So it really depends on what we want to call it. It is a procedure that is debatable and amendable. It requires a motion and a second. Beyond that, once that is done, it's done. Once that motion is made and it's seconded and it's voted on, that's it.
Okay, so, yes, hang on one second, Commissioner O'Donnell. So one, one thing that Commissioner McGriff said that I would like to, to follow up on, and this is where I wish the mayor were still here to answer questions, because it did seem earlier that he made a statement, and you all can verify, you heard too, so maybe I misheard, but it, I know he was going to sue, and he was soliciting funds for, see, I don't know where these funds were going. I don't know if the intent was that they were going to be given to the city. And I know, and from his statement, he was talking to the fireworks company, and already setting some actions in motion as far as them prepping. I have a real concern about an elected official, as you do, going out and collecting funds on behalf of the city. That, that raises very big alarm bells for me, and I'll just put that out there. Commissioner O'Donnell, I think Ms. Richter is ready to speak. Do you want to make a quick comment before she speaks?
My quick comment would be, I think we need to be thoughtful in this, and we need to be well-advised. I mean, we've got another third item we still need to discuss tonight. We're talking about a pattern of conduct that needs to be discussed, and it's a totality, and not an individual event. We've got multiple events, and I think they should all be reviewed from a legal perspective before we choose to execute any type of motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, Commissioner O'Donnell. Ms. Richter?
You looked right at me and said, Commissioner O'Donnell, and I.
I was correcting myself. I heard.
He's, he's looking really good in that case, though.
Well, who has the better mustache?
I think you've got that hands down, sir.
Yes. All right. Ms. Richter?
So I think the starting point is probably the charter, because that's sort of the high level principles that bind the, how the commission meetings operate and what the duties of the commissioners are. And so we have Section 31 that talks about what creates a vacancy, in what circumstances. In other words, would we deem there to be a vacancy and move forward as though there was one? An office shall be deemed vacant upon the incumbent's death, adjudicated incompetence, conviction of a felony, other offense pertaining to his office, unlawful destruction of public records, resignation, recall from office, or ceasing to possess the qualifications for the office. So to me, the only sort of possible ones are offenses pertaining to an, to a commissioner's office, or duties relating to his office. I would need to do some more thinking about whether or not the activities rise to that level, but I'm inclined to say no. I would like an opportunity to go back and look at Roberts Rules. I would agree with what Denise has said. There are, is a whole list of, of issues, of, of bases to respond to that we can explore, and probably some of the mayor's behavior may have fallen into that, but I don't think it's going to rise to the level of removal of office, a vacancy under Chapter 31.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Richter. Any more commission comments on this item 3B?
Is there direction to the staff? I mean, is, is this a conversation? Do you want the, Ms. Richter and the city attorney's office to bring back more information? Is, what is, what would the commission like us to do at this point?
Right. I'm, I think the answer is going to be, we want to talk about 3C first, but Commissioner Smith, is, is that what you're thinking? Go ahead and move on to 3C. And then we'll, and then we'll come back to that.
Okay.
Commissioner McGriff?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Lyle Smith. I would say that we need to make it very clear that no commission, no member of this commission should be soliciting money from anybody for any purpose unless it's something that the city itself has sanctioned, and that's a city program, and we're looking for sponsors or anything of that sort, but no one should be soliciting money on their own, whether it was intentional, or by accident, or however it came about representing that we were going to be doing something. I think, I think we need to make that very, very, very clear. I thought it was already clear, but obviously it's not been clear.
I agree, and I, I feel like the soliciting of funds is a little bit different. It's an additional item to our concerns that were raised at the last emergency session about the mayor reaching out to folks and, and not bringing things before the commission. I think in general, we thought that this was an item that should have come before the commission, for the commission to talk about, before any action was made. But then the second issue is that actions were made, and now what do we do with them? So.
I guess the one thing I would say to think about as well, and I do not know the answer to this, but as I think about the conversations that's, that's been, that's been had, you know, I think the one thing that, that I don't know the answer to, and there's only probably a few people that know the answer to it, is, you know, is there a difference in the commission's eye of a elected official soliciting funds? Is there a difference between a city event and a private event? And, you know, I, I don't know the specifics. I was not approached about a fireworks show being put on by Oregon City. I was not asked about it, so I don't have the details, but when I think about it, those are two different things, right? And I don't know if there's a difference in how the commission approaches that.
Does it pass the smell test?
Understood.
Yes. I think it stinks with regard to either item, option. Rocky?
Commissioner Smith?
So on that point, and, and Commissioner McGriff's point, if that request for funds was made with our economic development director present, then that implies it was a city topic.
Understood.
I would agree. I, I think that's the, one of the key factual pieces of information. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I agree with what Commissioner Smith and Commissioner McGriff said. However, the question at this point is, no one of us should be proceeding without the approval of the majority of the commission in pursuing anything. And I'm aware of that meeting, and with, just the attempted solicitation, whether successful or not, especially in view of some of the extenuating factors of a business that wants to do some expansion within Oregon City, it, it is not, was not a wise choice, to say the least. So I think, again, before we take any action, we need to review all actions, because there's a totality that needs to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, so in the interest of time, I think we should move on to item 3C, Discussion of the June 3, 2020 Commission Meeting Recording and Commission Communications. Mr. Conkle, do you have anything, or do you want to just discuss?
So my understanding was, you know, the, the commission requested the opportunity to discuss the June 3 meeting, so our last official meeting, including the lack of opportunity for commission members to provide comments, both at the beginning of the meeting, when the mayor spoke and chief ban spoke, as well as under the communications section of the adoption. adopted commission agenda, and concern related to direction to staff concerning the termination of the meeting recording upon adjournment of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conkle. That is the summary. I will start off by saying that I did have a conversation with the mayor earlier today, and I specifically asked him if he, because if he indeed had a conversation with the AV person who runs the equipment, and he said he did, he affirmed that statement and said that he did have the conversation, and he instructed the person to end the recording or end the production of the meeting immediately after the gavel on adjournment. So it was pre-planned, it was intentional, and I think there were some questions about, you know, I think we were thinking he might be here to confirm yes or no. I can tell you, I talked to him today and asked him point blank. I asked him after he told me he may not stay for this entire meeting, and so therefore I wanted to have a direct answer from him that I could relay to you all, since this item was on the agenda tonight. So I'll open it up at that point, at this point, for other commissioners. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here I go. First up, I think, once again, we have the totality of the circumstances. If you look at the meeting in its entirety, we have the initial opening of the meeting where the mayor made his statement that many found objectionable about Oregon City's involvement, his personal thoughts on whether it be racial injustice or inequities or whatever. Other commissioners asked to speak, they were immediately denied that. And there was no argument at that point because I believe every commissioner thought they would have the option to have their voice heard at the end of the meeting. So the fact that, as you've indicated, the mayor pre-planned that immediately upon the end of the meeting, on the drop of the gavel, no one would be allowed to speak, and I think that's unforgivable. I think communication is the key to success, whether it be among us, we commissioners, or with our public. So I don't know, as you well know, we reopened the meeting upon Commissioner Rocky Smith's motion. I have no idea what the general public felt, and I don't even know if the two meetings or the continuation of that one meeting has been melded together for a presentation on our website. But again, it's the total package that needs to be reviewed. Was there a violation of public records, or is there a violation of procedure, or is the mayor totally within his right to do what he did? Regardless of even if he was within his right, I think consideration and hearing the voices of others is essential. So that concludes my statement. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith want to go last?
Commissioner Smith, do you want to go last? That was Commissioner McGriff's question.
I asked a question. Do you want to go last?
No, I really don't have a lot more to say.
I have a couple of things, but please go ahead.
The point here for me was, I was very frustrated at the last commission meeting that we were not allowed to speak. And as Commissioner O'Donnell stated, I assumed that we would have that chance during our normal commissioner comment time. And so when we got to that commissioner comment time and the mayor closed the meeting, I did raise an objection to that and reopen the meeting with a second from, I believe, Commissioner Lyle Smith, or was it?
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell. So that meeting continued, and we were allowed to speak. The mayor left. That in itself was disappointing, but later to find out that the mayor had every intention of doing that before the meeting ever started, and that the tape, the video feed was cut because the mayor requested it before the meeting even started, goes way beyond, you know, disappointing. And so I really have a huge problem with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. So I have a couple of questions for staff. City Recorder Katie Riggs, can you please clarify, if we have that end of the meeting on video, will it be posted to the website? We're not totally sure what all happened with the AV. We were, I know I was told, and I believe some other commissioners were told, that the TV presentation was cut. Can you let us know what the end result will be?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. The live broadcast on cable TV along with the YouTube streaming and our granicus was all cut at the same time. Unbeknownst to me, the audio was muted, but then later the audio was unmuted, and I left the granicus streaming the entire time, so any audio that would have been captured would be captured in that, only when the audio was not muted. Also, when this was very quickly happening, I went ahead and hit record on the Zoom, which we typically don't record because we have so many other backups, and this is all new to me, so we haven't done these in the past. Unfortunately, with the Zoom, I did only catch the beginning of your comments, Commissioner Lyle Smith. I missed all of Commissioner Smith's comments and the vote to reopen the meeting. Same with the granicus, I have the very last statement that Commissioner Smith made and then went on to hear the rest of it, but nothing prior to that. With all of that, we do have an additional backup from all of those items, which is a security camera that we put in and a live microphone. Unfortunately, I did reach out to the staff that managed that department, and they are still downloading that, and I have not received that file yet, so I'm unsure as to what exactly was captured. I know that that is an automatic between, I believe, it begins at 5:00 PM and goes until midnight, but I don't know if the audio is automatic. I do know the video is, so we're still trying to get a copy of that, to review it, to see what exactly we do have, and if we do have the entire thing, we will be piecing that together and posting that, but I don't have that at this time, and I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I think this is an example of why we were, you know, why the abrupt ending, I think, definitely caught all of us in the room by surprise. I think we were a little shell-shocked and kind of scrambling, so you could have missed us scrambling, trying to figure out what to do, and you probably didn't miss anything until we actually had the roll call or the vote to reopen the meeting. So I appreciate your effort. I know the commission appreciates your effort to document our meeting, the full meeting for the record, and I know you're working on that, so I appreciate that. Commissioner McGriff?
Yes, I have a couple of questions and then a statement. Number one, I presume that the city recorder or the city manager is responsible for directing the actions of our contract AV person. So in my mind, if that is, you're nodding your head, yes. So in my mind, no one else should have any authority to tell that person to do anything. I should not be able to go into that booth and tell Steve or anybody else, oh, do this or do that. So I want that very clear. That's unacceptable. To find out, as Commissioner Smith said, that this was premeditated, really disturbs me. And, Mr. Mayor, if you are watching from home, I do not know, I do not understand why some of the things that you have done, why you're doing them, why you've done them. It's beyond me. I guess in a lot of ways, as Commissioner Smith and Commissioner O'Donnell said, I'm disappointed, but, you know, nobody has to manage my disappointments. But I think we have something that was premeditated, we have some procedural issues, and we have some conduct issues, which again, as Commissioner Smith said, are now becoming cumulative. I'm disappointed that we had to be here tonight, and I'm disappointed from the standpoint that there are so many issues that we need to deal with, that we need to be putting our attention to, that are of importance to this city. And here we are with our staff and ourselves on a Sunday night, dealing with, I guess what I can describe as maybe behavioral issues, I don't know. I think that, as Commissioner Smith said, that we need to make a statement. I don't know if that's passing a motion, once we get some information from the city attorney, or we make some sort of a statement now that is put into a motion that is further refined by the city attorney and the city manager, I don't know. I would like to hear what the others think.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Our community, our community, again, it's those expectations. I just don't know where we are right now with those expectations. But I thank the staff for being here. I'm sorry you have to be here on a Sunday night.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll restate what I said before. I think it's important that we view this in terms of, if you want to use the word cumulative behavior or totality. We've got three events where the behavior makes one question, whether it be the COVID or the fireworks event, or the statement about racism and the loss of life. And I think that all needs to be reviewed by our staff appropriately and determine what, if we got violations of conduct, or if we have just behavioral issues that are also of concern to our community. As much as I think a resolution or something is proper, I think a proper investigation first as to the, what this conduct constitutes, and I think that needs to be done first. I'm in agreement with some sort of resolution, but I want it properly investigated first and our options put forward to us.
I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Conkle or Ms. Richter?
Yeah, I think what I was discussing with Ms. Richter is, I think, you know, I think some direction from the commission as it relates to, I mean, I think it's, I think we can certainly lay out options. I think that if you're looking for some type of an investigation that is, I guess I'd like to have that discussion about who's appropriate to do that. I'm not sure that staff is the appropriate, you know, person to be investigating sitting commissioners of the jurisdiction that they work for. So I guess it's really about the level and the depth that the commission would like to go.
So if I could follow up, I'm not sure if investigation is the right word. My interpretation from listening to the whole conversation and all the commissioners is it sounds like we would like an evaluation from our city attorney, taking all of these things into account, to tell us, is there any, do any of these things add up an amount to any action that we could take? We would like some clarity on that. I think you said earlier that you don't think these things rise to a certain level for a vacancy, for example. Does that sound correct? Is that from the commissioners?
I don't know where the word vacancy came in.
It's in our charter.
It's in the charter. We're not talking about vacancy.
In our charter, I did read that this morning and this afternoon, leading up to this meeting. It seems like that's the only section in our charter that really addresses the removal or the unexpected vacancy, unplanned vacancy of a position is just in that section, that one section, and the language is very limited.
And what causes it.
Right, and what causes the vacancy, so.
And we're responding to that? I didn't hear any of us say those words.
What we were, there was a question about what Ms. Richter was reading earlier relates to what creates a vacancy, what options are available to the commission. And so we were starting the discussion from the most clarity that we have is in the charter that talks about the incumbent's death, adjudicated incompetence, conviction of a felony, other offense pertaining to his office, or unlawful destruction of public records, resignation, recall from office, or ceasing to possess the qualifications for the office. So it was trying to put some context about, context around, you know, there were some questions about what can the commission do?
Right.
And that's the clearest that we have is in the charter. Now, whether that's utilizing Robert's Rules of Order, I think that's the next step, you know, that's another option, you know, is, so I think it was just trying to clarify what we know exists and.
I think what we can provide to the commission is sort of the menu of options. But I want to be careful about, we don't know, we don't know that we know all the facts. And much of this has to do with what's within the mayor's activities on behalf of the city, and what is the mayor doing himself personally. And so, and I'm not disputing the fireworks thing, I mean, that to me seems to be more on the city side, but there's, there is the development of facts, and then there's what legal implication those facts have. And I can give you a list, and it sounds appropriate for me to give you a list of sort of, here is the menu of things that the commission might do, here are the types of things that fall within that, but developing facts and determining the legal implication of those facts gets a little more dicey, from my view, and may lead you to the need to retain a third party to do that part.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Richter. I appreciate that comment. I think at the same time, many of us, well, I'll speak for myself, I think we're responding, or I'm responding to the number of emails that we received asking us to do something, and that do something was a wide range of things for us to do, and we are looking at this cumulative of multiple items. They may have been talking about one item in particular, the first item on the agenda. For us as a commission, there's three items on the agenda that are all concerning to all of us, and so I think it's, at this point, we're doing an exploration of what we can do. If anybody in the community is still watching, they could hear this conversation, because I think a lot of people may be frustrated with the fact that when we responded via email or on social media, when I said, I can't do anything. And so I think it helps our community hear it and know where we are limited legally and what we can do. Commissioner O'Donnell, you had raised your hand next.
Obviously, as you already stated, a significant number of the people in our community have expressed their concern, and I would, I would agree with Ms. Richter that we don't know all the facts, and I don't know about my choice of terminology, whether it be investigation or whatever, but it's very possible that does this conduct, the totality of this conduct, these three events, does it constitute simply bad manners, or does it rise to an ethics violation? And I don't know the answer to any of those things. And I feel we may very well end up with an outside review, if you want to call it that, review, investigation, of the matters that we have discussed here tonight. I think we owe that to our citizenry.
Commissioner Smith?
I agree. I actually read the charter before our last emergency meeting and realized the wording in it, and, you know, my assumption in reading that was, you know, that really there was nothing there to allow the commission to deal with a situation like this. So I immediately went to the commission handbook, and there is a section there, and I brought that up at the last emergency meeting. Other than that, I don't, I don't think there's really much specific, but I don't think any of those prevent a city commission from making some sort of a statement, you know, just in general about, you know, the ability or the ability of confidence in an elected official doing their job, just as a statement. But I think we do need to know all the facts, and I think we do need to have a full understanding of all those things.
Technical difficulties over here.
What's happening?
Commissioner McGriff is having technical Commissioner McGriff is having technical difficulties.
I couldn't find my cursor to put my hand up on the Zoom thing. So city recorder said, flip off the presentation and go to the other screen. So I did. I, I just want to say for the public and everyone who's listening that I, I take no pleasure in having to discuss these items, but I concur with Commissioner Smith, who says that it's not just these three things, there are other things as well. And I guess what I was given when I came on was there was a packet that I was given about the rules of procedure, about how this Commission operates. And I think as commissioners, we have the obligation, well, not obligation, we have the conscience to talk to each other about behavior. We got an email recently that talked about how we needed to act professionally. I sent a reply email, not a reply, but another email saying that I think we have a responsibility to act responsibly to our staff, that they do not have, they shouldn't, should not be abused, they should not be spoken to the way they have been spoken to in the past. So it's a lot of things altogether to act professionally. And as I said, I don't, I don't take any pleasure in this. These are things that I think people inherently should know, but maybe not. Maybe people don't know them. Maybe I'd make an assumption about the way that I was raised and the things that my family taught me and my father, particularly as many of you know, military guy. There's some heavy obligations that come with being a child of a military personnel. It's, it's pretty intense. So I just think that, yes, I don't want to act in haste. I don't want to act emotionally. I want to act rationally, but I also want us to make sure that we are moving forward, that we are going to take some action. The frustration in everyone's voice is apparent. And I don't want to be back here again for another special meeting where we're having to deal with something that someone else has done. But we do have that responsibility to our public to police ourselves.
All right. So I, I think we're probably getting close to maybe hearing a motion from someone to provide some direction to staff. But Commissioner O'Donnell, do you have a motion or do you have a comment?
Just a final comment. I also take no pleasure in this whatsoever, but unfortunately, the citizenry doesn't distinguish between one member of our commissioner and the Commission as a whole. And I do not want a loss of confidence in our Commission. The citizenry, the people do not distinguish when a person bears a title, whether it be commissioner or mayor. If you say something, it's viewed as being spoken for your local government. And that, that needs to be clear that we've got four commissioners who oftentimes are of a different view than our mayor and certainly don't, don't participate in some of the more recent postings. So I think Mr. Conklin has the direction. I'm not sure what he needs as far as a evaluation of the events we've said in their totality and what does that constitute and what are our options? If you want that in a form of a motion, I can make it.
I'm reading the lips of Ms. Richter and she says, we don't need a motion for this item.
Well, I think you, I think you, I mean, I think we've got consensus on next steps for staff. I mean, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what the motion would be other than instruct me to go put together a menu of options.
And is that what everybody is expecting?
Yeah. I also want to.
Yes, I was just, I was just using the motion language as a way to make sure that we had consensus or that you felt like you had consensus and direction.
And I appreciate that.
Let me ask Ms. Richter a question. So what I'm a little bit concerned is that this is not a judicial hearing. This is basically, I think what I hear some of the commissioners saying or were saying that there may be some form of reprimand is what we are looking at. So I don't want to get tied up in, you know, investigations. I think you have presented some, some very clear findings of fact that you have verified beyond a shadow of a doubt, that some action took place and you have verified that. And I, I take you at your word. You said that you confirmed that? That's, that's enough for me. So I don't know, you know, what else we need to say other than I just want to, I want to reiterate again that no one has any business going in there except you or you. And I hope that's clear.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner McGriff. I, I thought that was one piece that we hadn't totally buttoned up and I thought I would give Mr. Conklin a chance to maybe address operations or maybe operations going forward to.
As it relates to the AV tech.
As it relates to the AV.
Or any operations.
Oh, yeah. So, you know, Ms. Riggs had a, had a discussion with the folks at Willamette Falls TV and clarified, you know, when, when we're working with our contractors, yes, I mean, usually the chain of command is through the staff. It stops with staff unless it's brought up to the Commission for some direction. No individual staff or commission member should be directing staff on what to do. I think you are all well aware of that. So that was clarified. Ms. Riggs has worked with Willamette Falls TV concerning some procedural changes as to control of the meeting and, you know, whether that be the tape itself or the volumes. So I believe that we've, regardless of what the Commission does now, this, this, we believe has been addressed.
I thought it was already fairly clear. I mean, I wanted to, I don't want to insult you by saying it ain't over till the fat lady sings, but that's basically, that's the summation of it. When you say that it's over, then it's over. I mean, that was my understanding.
Our understanding has always been that the chair is the person running the meeting and if the chair ends the meeting, that's the end of the meeting. Unfortunately, if our production gets shut down immediately at the end of a meeting, it's very difficult to get it up and running that quickly.
I mean, you usually give him sick, him or her signals as to when you're on or off. So I mean, I, I observed you over the many years and I always thought you were the one in charge.
All right. So I think we've, we've covered that topic sufficiently. Mr. Conklin, do you have direction or Ms. Richter on the other item?
I, I think I, I understand and I appreciate Commissioner McGriff's comment about, you know, not making this a full quasi judicial hearing, but to provide some options. And I, and I, and I don't mean options as in, it, it, there will be options in terms of intensity, but also options in terms of what violations you want to identify. Right?
Could I ask one more clarifying question, please, Commissioner Lyle Smith?
Yes, quickly.
So let me ask the, the question. So taking it to its logical conclusion, the, the, the recording and everything that goes with any public meeting we have here is a public record.
Correct.
So if the public record, the chain of the public record is disrupted, is that a constitution? Is that, excuse me, does that constitute destruction of a public record? I mean, that would be a question I would have because if we don't have it and we were here and we were meeting, then there seems to be some sort of a gap in our public meeting process that we have and our obligation to the public to be here in public and have the, have the meeting being going on. So while there wasn't a physical destruction, there was, there's a gap there.
An intentional disruption.
Yes, disruption, yes. Thank you, thank you for that. That was the word that I was looking for was a disruption.
I think Ms. Riggs would like to make a statement.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the Commission know that by law, we are not required to do a live broadcast of our meetings. We're also not required to audio or video record them. By law, we are required to provide minutes and that could be in many forms, but usually written minutes that have been approved by the Commission. So typically, unfortunately, if a ending of a meeting like this situation happens, as long as I'm able to provide you with written minutes of the meeting, which is not verbatim, ours are usually summary and the most important items are the items that are city business that are being voted on typically are what is required in the minutes. That is the, the law. That's the record of the meeting.
That's, that's what the public meeting law requires.
Yes, and I do understand that what my concern is, is that just about everything we were discussing was some sort of city business and affected the city in some way or another, either benignly or overtly. So there seems to be, there's, there's something missing there. Regardless of whether we're required to record, I think we have an expectation from our community that we have that record. I don't think anybody's expecting you and maybe they, I don't know whether they will be expecting you to, what you have, to, to verbatim say what we said. I don't know. I, you know, I, I'm not going to try to second guess what the public is thinking because that would be really foolish to try to do. But from everything we've heard and what I've seen online is that, you know, where's the rest of the meeting? Where's the rest of the meeting? And you and I had some conversation and I've just told people, I said, that the city recorder is working on that, so please be patient and you've already reiterated that. So I just, so again, there is some level of expectation that we, that people anticipated that it was going to be there. I, you know, again, I'm just telling you what the perception is. There is a perception that, you know, we've recorded everything else. Why do we not record that? Well, we had some technical difficulties. We had some other difficulties going on. So I just want that to be, you know, very clear that, that we did have an interruption in our communications, that we were trying to say something that, that was felt to be of importance to our community.
Okay. So I think we are ready to move on from this item. I don't hear any loud objections. So I'm going to move on to item number four, which is communications. Mr. Conklin, do you have anything for us?
I do not.
Anything from the commissioners? No?
I just wanted to say that, as I was going to say last time, that both of the committees that I sit on on behalf of the city, the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Coalition and the Downtown Oregon City Association have been meeting throughout this situation. And Willamette Falls Heritage is basically trying to figure out how to get the word out and they have been doing some things on their website to let people know that they still exist and that things are still moving forward. The renovation of Old City Hall is moving forward, which they're very excited about and hopefully they will get the contracts signed and be moving into that building within maybe the next year. Terms of the Downtown Oregon City Association, they have been doing everything that they can to help prepare our businesses downtown and other members for what's coming next, which of course, we don't always know what is coming next with this closure. So it's, it's a testament to staff who is keeping up and I think spending her entire life on Zoom because she's attending webinars online, talking on the federal level, on the state level and on the local level with regard to main streets, keeping our main street healthy. And that's all I just wanted to report to let people know that that effort is moving forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I just wanted to clarify so that the citizens aren't confused when Commissioner McGriff mentioned the old city hall, she was referring to.
Oh, West Lynn, yes. Yes, West Lynn City, Old West Lynn City Hall at the foot of the bridge.
All right. And with that, I think we are adjourned. Thank you all.